And that is KGM signal to go forward, so I think you're good to go ahead and convene if you'd like.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. We want to convene the regular meeting of the Monrovia City Council this Tuesday, February 2nd, 2021. And this evening, our invocation will be given by Police Chaplain Terrence Brown. And before Chaplain Brown gives us the invocation, I would like to remind everyone of his family's loss. And if we could keep his family and your thoughts and prayers, I know he'll be very appreciative. Chaplain Brown, the stage is yours.
Let us pray. Oh Lord, as always, we come before you tonight in the spirit of praise and thanksgiving. Ever grateful, ever mindful of your continued love and support that have been shown unto us through various life challenges, adversities, and hardships, fulfilling a promise that you would never leave us nor forsake us. That through it all, your presence will always be available, a constant source of inspiration, hope, love, wisdom, strength, and guidance. So on tonight, I am requesting that your peace just have free reign in this meeting. Let it flow in the hearts and minds of every participant, eradicating all fears, worries, insecurities, and any form of doubt. Leaving behind an unwavering and unshakable faith and trust in the idea that truly, yes, truly, better days are indeed ahead. In your glorious name we pray. Amen.
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 Amen. Thank you Pastor Brown. We appreciate it. Um, this evening, our pledge of allegiance will be given by Councilmember Spicer, and I'm going to get my flag out Larry, so if you could sit tight for just one moment. And it's all yours. All right, please rise.
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Larry. Thank you very much. Uh, Alice, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmembers Blackburn.
Here.
Chevlin.
Here.
Spicer.
Here.
Mayor Protem Crujington.
Here.
And Mayor Adams.
Here. Thank you. Um, we had no closed session this evening, so no report is due on that. We do have a presentation proclaiming February 2021 is Black History Month, and I'm going to ask Councilmember Spicer to read that proclamation. Larry, if you would, please.
Okay, is um, is Barbara there?
Um, yes, Councilmember Spicer, I just admitted her to the meeting. Sorry for that delay.
Okay Barbara, so February is dedicated as Black History Month, where we're honoring the triumphs and struggles of African Americans throughout the US history, including the Civil Rights Movement and their artistic, cultural, and political achievements. And so on behalf of the city, I'd like to present this proclamation to you. And it reads as follows, whereas during Black History Month, we celebrate the many achievements and contributions made by African Americans to our economic, cultural, spiritual, and political development. And whereas much of Monrovia's strength and character, past and present, can be attributed to African Americans in the community, and whereas this should not be just a month-long celebration, but a daily dose, as African Americans have played a central role in our nation's history and our country's is great because of our diversity. And now, therefore, I, Tom Adams, Mayor of the City of Monrovia, California, along with the entire City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of February 2021 as Black History Month. And we ask that you and your families learn more about the contribution made by notable African Americans and take part in one of the many Black History Month celebrations occurring in Monrovia, dated the 2nd of February 2021.
Thank you Larry and Barbara. I understand that we're going to be forwarding that proclamation over to you. Do you have something you'd like to say this evening?
Thank you so much, Mayor and City Council members. On actually on behalf of Monrovia and Dworty Black Alumni, can you guys hear me?
It's kind of cutting out.
You're kind of slow Barbara.
Okay, unfortunately, I have the past couple of days have been having issues with my internet. So I'll just, I'll just say thank you. But I am excited that this year, um, we do have our kickoff, which is this Saturday. We do have two um, uh, scholarship recipients that are coming and going to be speaking. One is Leila Spicer will be speaking, as well as um, Dalen Atkinson will be also speaking on our kickoff for our scholarship. So on behalf of Monrovia and Dworty Black Alumni, thank you very much.
Thank you Barbara, and we appreciate you being here for that presentation. And we appreciate everything the organization does, so we wish you the best. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
And Tom, I know that she has a flyer that has all the monthly events on it, and I'm sure, have you already forwarded that to Dylan?
Yes, 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 yes. Yes, I have. Thank you. Good.
Thank you Barbara.
Have a good evening, everyone. Okay.
You bet. Stay well, okay?
Yes, I will. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, um, now I think there's something that um, was not on the agenda. But we do have a couple of pretty special people we need to say something to this year. It, it, it is Larry and Becky's birth month. So, you know, normally we would call on Becky to lead us in song, but it just doesn't seem appropriate that Becky would sing to herself. So um, where'd Gloria go? Gloria, would you lead us in a big happy birthday to Larry and Becky?
I'll give it a shot. Happy birthday to you.
Cha cha cha.
Happy birthday to you.
Cha cha cha.
Happy birthday Becky and Larry. Happy birthday to you.
And many more.
I love that picture.
Well, Becky and Larry, I'm, I'm sorry we can't join you with a cake this evening, but um, happy birthday to both of you, and hopefully for next year's birthday, we'll be able to blow the candles out again. Thank you.
Hey Tom, Tom, I was looking out the window to see if the chief was out there with a cake.
Uh, probably not this year Larry, but um, we'll, we'll make it up to you, I promise you that.
Oh, no, we're going to make it happen.
Oh.
Thank you.
We'll make that happen. Happy birthday to both of you. Okay, uh, do we have a student government report? Is Sophia with us this evening?
Unfortunately, I don't see her this evening.
Okay, then we'll pass on that. Um, on the order of business, we're going to pull CC3. We have a comment from the public on that. And with that being pulled, I will entertain a motion on the balance of the consent calendar.
So moved on the balance of the consent calendar.
And I'll second it.
It's moved and seconded. Any other discussion? Any objection? Alice, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Blackburn.
Yes.
Alex, I think you're muted.
Yes, I am muted. Now I'm unmuted, and I vote in favor of the consent calendar.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Chevlin.
Yes.
Councilmember Spicer.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Crujington.
Yes.
And Mayor Adams.
Yes, thank you. Okay, returning back to CC3, is an extension of the application period to fill an unscheduled vacancy on the Planning Commission. And Alice, do you want that? Does Dylan take it?
I will throw it over to Dylan for that.
Thank you.
Okay, what I'll do, Mr. Mayor, is I'll provide a brief overview of the staff report, and then Alice will read the, the public comment. So in council staff report under CC3, a request was made by Councilmember Blackburn to extend the application process for filling an unscheduled vacancy on the Planning Commission. Uh, we received notice that Planning Commissioner Robert McClellan resigned his position due to an impending move outside of the city, which was effective December 10th. In accordance, accordance with established procedures, as well as Council Resolution 2003-67, the city posted the position opening, uh, and in accordance with established procedures. The application period for the vacancy occurred during the peak of the holiday season, within a short period of limited city operations. If you remember, we even closed City Hall for a few days. Um, when the application period ended, um, at the close of business on January 15th, we had two applications. We had also just done the council reassignments, which normally we do in May or June of every year. Um, however, we did them a little bit late this year. And so when we shuffled and appointed a different council member as a liaison to the Planning Commission, where previously it was Councilmember Spicer, and now the liaison is Councilmember Blackburn. Councilmember Blackburn had asked that we extend the, the application process for another two weeks. Um, we had only received two applications. And in order to get a few more applicants in the queue in order to schedule the interviews, we have a selection committee process, the liaison, the Chair of the Planning Commission, as well as the staff representative, in this case, it's Planning, Community Development Director Craig Jimenez, hold interviews with all the applicants. Um, according to the, the resolution approved in 2003, um, the, the application process is ultimately, it's a, it's a council resolution. And so staff, we didn't, we weren't going to make any changes or adjustment to the application. So we scheduled the item for council consideration. Uh, certainly, we're, we're able to proceed with the two applications we have here tonight. But we're also able to continue the application process for another two weeks. Um, it would be the intention, like with every application, if you apply to be a member of a commission, you, you take part in the interview process. And in this case, there's only one seat available. Um, but um, you know, both, both of the applicants we currently have will be invited to participate in the interview process. It's just a matter of do we want to continue for another two weeks due to these other circumstances. So that's the item before you tonight. And unless there's questions for me directly, I might invite Alice to read the, the public comment, which was submitted before the, the time, the deadline this evening.
Okay, Alice.
So we've received one comment from Jason Willoughby. Uh, last December, an announcement was made about an opening on the Planning Commission with a deadline of January 15 for applications. Two applicants submitted applications. On January 28th, we were informed that the new council member on the commission, Blackburn, is requesting an extension. As one of those applicants, I feel the request for extension is premature since neither one of the applicants have had an opportunity to be interviewed or considered for the commission. Furthermore, it is my understanding that the new request for extension by the council member has not been presented or considered by the members of the Planning Committee. I, it would be in the interest of residents to know why the extension is being requested, why this request has not come before the commission, and why the timely applicants have not been interviewed. Thank you, Jason Willoughby.
Okay, are there any questions for Dylan or Alice on this item? Then I will entertain a motion.
Um, move approval.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
It's moved and seconded, uh, that we take this two-week delay? Are there any comments? Alice, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Blackburn.
Yes.
Chevlin.
Yes.
Spicer.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Crujington.
Yes.
And Mayor Adams.
Yes, thank you. Okay, we will now move on to public comment, and I understand from the city clerk that we have some other items under public comment.
We do, Mayor. Our first comment is from the Chamber of Commerce. Um, she reports that Operation Save Our Restaurants was a success, and the coupon expired on Sunday, January 31st, 2021. Twenty-one, there were 21 participating restaurants. Uh, Chamber Awards event coming soon with more information to be given at a later date. There's a new website, www.shopsgv.com. They're currently testing the site, which will launch in a few weeks to the community. And she ends with thanking you for a great state of the city, especially during this time. Our next comment comes from Monrovia Housing and Tenants Advocates, um, by Allison Henry. Dear Monrovia City Council, thank you for your work in Monrovia. MHTA rights to express concern, MHTA has regarding how the Monrovia Police Department is interacting with residents who are experiencing a disagreement with their landlord. On the 23rd of December, a local resident was illegally locked out of her own rented home. The Monrovia Police Department unwittingly facilitated an illegal lockout. I have corresponded with the city manager on this matter, thank you Dylan, but have not yet received a response on this matter. In speaking with my fellow MHTA members and the others in the community, I learned that this is not the first time that NPD unwittingly facilitated an illegal tenant lockout. These calls, which may seem like simple disputes, require an understanding of the law for tenants on behalf of the responding officer. If there is not a clear understanding of the law and protections and rights of tenants, they are forced out. Not only is this unjust, it also contributes to unsheltered residents on our streets. One, what is Monrovia Police Department's understanding of tenant law and protections that can result in a better outcomes? In one case, the tenant was locked out of her home with a lease. What supports do MPD offer? When they unwittingly facilitate an illegal lockout, they are contributing to homelessness. What supports are offered? In the case of the 122320 call, no supports were offered. The tenant wound up spending some nights in her car at the Gold Line Metro Parking Lot. Three, is MPD open to community, community discussion and training on how to better respond to these calls to ensure the tenant's rights are protected? Thank you for your attention to this matter. Police response should not include a ticket to homelessness and illegal evictions. I know Monrovia Police Department is community-minded and wants to always offer solutions, protection, and justice. Sincerely, Allison Henry. And our third comment for this evening comes from Carol Daly. Dear Monrovia City Representatives, low-income housing slash very low-income housing, what exactly is that? I worked for the Monrovia Post Office for 30 years, making about $50,000 a year. It was considered a good-paying job. I retired in 2006, and in retirement, I make about $25,000, or approximately $2,000 a month. As a one-person household, just for an example, my income falls in the extremely low-income category on the 2014 to 2021 Monrovia housing element. Isn't that shocking? I think it is. As the new housing element is being written for our city, I'm urging our city to please consider focusing on housing for the very low and low-income levels especially. According to the 2010 census, 60% of Monrovia's population is renters. I am a co-founder of Foothills Kitchen in Monrovia, where we feed and care for those in need. I cannot begin to tell you how many Monrovians fall out of housing due to losing a spouse and death, and the children want to sell the property, or up the rent, or flip the house, or their single wage can no longer pay the rent or mortgage. Or in more recent times, people that were recently illegally evicted and are now out on the street. These are Monrovians that have lived here most of their lives and can no longer afford to stay in our city after building up a lifetime of support in the community with their neighbors, places of worship, doctors, places they shop. And now they are on the street or having to move to far-off cities. That is one reason that I am urging our city to implement an inclusionary zoning ordinance whereby a developer that wants some of our prime land has to set aside a 20% to, 20 percentage, 20% of their project for affordable housing, or else pay an in-lief fee. Please, no more luxury townhouses. Let's take care of the Monrovians. We need affordable housing for seniors and families. There are many models of cities where inclusionary zoning ordinances work. We don't have to recreate the wheel. Let's adopt what works because it's so disheartening not to be able to direct people that have worked their whole lifetimes and live in Monrovia to not being able to find a place in the city that they love. Sincerely, Carol Daly, Foothills Kitchen, resident of Monrovia since 1974. And with that, she also includes a table of, uh, samples for very low-income households and such, which are available in the posted copy on the city's website for this meeting. And that concludes the public comments I've received.
Thank you Alice, and thank you to everyone who has written in to the city. Uh, we appreciate the time it's taken to do that, and I know we all look forward to a time when you can come down and actually talk to us. So, this is the best of a bad situation, but we do appreciate it. Um, we'll move on to, uh, public hearings, and a PH1 is a tentative track map and conditional use permit, um, for conduct, or for constructing four units on a PUD.
And Mayor, I need to recuse myself on this item, um, as, uh, in my work, I do business with Bowden Development, Inc., and I have a conflict there. So I will recuse myself, and I understand I will be put, placed in a waiting room and then let out afterwards.
Okay, thank you Becky, we appreciate that. And while you're in the waiting room, I believe Austin Arnold, our Assistant Planner, will give us the staff report. Welcome, Austin, how are you?
I'm great, thank you Mayor.
Good.
So again, thank you Mayor Adams, and good evening council members. Tonight before you, we have two entitlements, a tentative track map number 83341, and a conditional use permit CUP 2021-0001 for a new four-unit PUD at 511 through 517 East Walnut Avenue. And the applicant is Bowden Development, uh, and Todd Bowden. The property is located on the north side of East Walnut Avenue, between South California Avenue and South Shamrock Avenue. A 16-foot wide alleyway is located along the rear north side of the property where it intersects with Gladys Avenue. The subject property is located in the RM 3000 PUD zone. And the lot is currently developed with three multifamily minimal traditional-style houses with an attached carport, and each were built in roughly 1944, 48, and 49 respectively. As these homes are proposed for demolition, a determination of historical significance was taken and reviewed by the Historic Preservation Commission on August 26th of 2020. And it was determined that there was no significant, significant historical significance with this property, and was given a status code of 6Z. So the immediate development in the neighborhood on East Walnut Avenue, surrounding neighborhood, it's an eclectic mix of architectural styles with both single and multifamily development properties. The images that you've seen show the immediate properties within that vicinity. The top row showing the subject property in the middle, with the adjacent single-family developments on the left and right at 509 and 521 East Walnut, and then as well as directly across the street as well. Here we have the proposed site plan showing the development of the four detached two-story residential units. The lot will be subdivided into five parcels, which will be one parcel for each unit, plus a fifth parcel consisting of the common area that'll be managed by the Homeowners Association. The lot is unique in its visibility from both East Walnut Avenue and Gladys Avenue, and provided a unique opportunity to utilize this. The site plan is proposing to face the front units towards East Walnut Avenue, and the rear units towards the terminus of Gladys Avenue to the north. Each unit is roughly 1,300 square feet. It's going to be three-bed, two-and-a-half bath, and roughly a 600-square-foot private yard space. In addition to that, the front units, front units will have an attached two-car garage, whereas the rear units will have a detached two-car garage. The site has been sensitively designed to minimize impacts to the surrounding neighborhoods and with regards to placement of windows and setbacks. And in addition to that, the vehicular traffic will come in off of the alleyway off of Gladys Avenue rather than East Walnut Avenue. This proposed development does meet or exceed all the development standards, and this table shows those standards with regards to FAR, height, setbacks, recreation space, and parking. Here we have the elevation plan for the units A and B. These would be the units that face East Walnut Avenue. And the proposed homes are going to be a Mediterranean in style. They're going to incorporate low-pitched hip roofs with concrete S roof tiles in light and dark brown-colored palette. The exterior will be finished in a light sand finish from La Habra Stucco in an eggshell color. And the, and the units facing East Walnut Avenue will have wide porches, whereas the rear ones are going to have recessed porches. So these are the units of C and D facing the alley and Gladys Avenue. And then here's a side view of that same rear two units. And again, all second-floor windows have been offset and carefully placed to address privacy and view shed impacts. In addition, um, architectural details are including divided light windows, fixed wooden shutters, and some black fabric awnings. Here we have an aerial photograph that depicts the proposed two-story PUD development in relation to other two-story developments that are within the area. So directly north, you have a, a new three-unit, um, that are also two-story. There's, I believe, there's a 10 to 14 apartment complex down the street off of there, as well as, um, to the east as well. So there's a number of two-story units within the area. And in conclusion, again, the Historic Preservation Commission reviewed the determination of historical significance on August 26th. There was an advisory review by the Community Development Director on behalf of the DRC, and that was taken on November 4th, 2020, and made a recommendation of the Planning Commission with draft conditions, which they reviewed on January 13th of 2021, and they are also recommending approval, um, to you at City Council here tonight. And with that, that concludes my presentation. And if it so occurs, then, um, staff is recommending, and Planning Commission is recommending to adopt Resolution 2021-10. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you Austin. Any questions of staff?
Well, Tom, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Hey Austin, so where the driveway entrance is from the alleyway, is there a gate going across there?
There is not one currently proposed. Um, they may propose one in the future. Um, so that, that's up to the developer. It's not a requirement or any conditions of approval requiring as such.
Yeah, because it might run into a problem of people walking straight through the, um, you know, within that, um, development, walking straight through the, um, alleyway, on through the property owner's property, you know what I mean?
I do. Um, we have brought that up to the developer, and, and that's, if, if it's a wish, we can make that as a condition of approval.
No, it's good. I was just wondering if there was one on the plans or not. That's all. Okay, thanks Austin.
Thank you.
Thank you Larry. Any other questions of staff? And this is a public hearing. I will open the public hearing. And I see the applicant is with us this evening. Um, Mr. Bowden, do you have any comments you'd like to make?
Uh, good evening Mayor and members of the City Council. Uh, Todd Bowden, representing Bowden Development. And, uh, we, uh, thank Austin for the, the comprehensive presentation and, uh, look forward to a successful project. And just a quick comment in response to, um, Mr. Spicer's, uh, comment regarding the gate. We will more than likely pursue a, um, a gate for the Gladys entrance to the north, uh, through DRC during the process. So, um, I, I, I believe that's going to happen. Um, but it isn't designated right now, but it more than likely will happen. So, thank you for your time, and I appreciate your consideration of this, uh, application this evening.
Thanks.
Thank you. Um, see, city clerk, do we have any public comments regarding this item?
No, we did not receive any comments.
We do not. Okay, then I will close the public hearing, and I'll entertain a motion.
Move for approval.
Second.
Okay, it's moved and seconded to approve this item. Um, any other discussion? Is there any objection?
Need a roll call vote on that.
Yes. Uh, Alice, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Blackburn.
Yes.
Chevlin. I'm sorry.
Chevlin's out.
Spicer.
Yes.
Uh, Mayor Protem Crujington.
Yes.
And Mayor Adams.
Yes, thank you so much. Thank you Austin.
Mayor, um, with, with the adoption of Resolution 2021-10, that's the city's final action on the requested conditional use permit and the map. And, uh, any judicial review of that decision must be sought within the time periods set out in Code of Civil Procedure Section 1094.6.
Okay, thank you. And I see Councilmember Chevlin is back with us. Welcome back. We'll move on now to PH2, tentative track map and conditional use permit to construct a 10-unit industrial condominium project. And Sherri Burmejo, our Planning Division- And Sherry Burmejo, our Planning Division Manager, will give us the staff report. Welcome, Sherry.
Thank you very much, Mr. Adams, members of the City Council. This next project is a proposal for the development of a new 10-unit industrial condominium project. The applicants tonight are the project architect, Mr. Eric Tang, and Mr. Hank Jong is a civil engineer. There are two entitlements proposed this evening. The first is a conditional use permit, and that's because any time there's a proposal for the construction of 10,000 square feet of non-residential conditional use permits is required. And then the subdivision map, the tentative tract map, is proposed to subdivide the airspace within the building so that each of the units can be sold separately. So the project site's located on a fairly large corner of South Magnolia and West Chestnut Avenue. It totals close to .76 acres, so three-quarters of an acre in size. It's located within a manufacturing area within the city that's predominantly surrounded by light industrial office uses. The underlying lot consists of four parcels, and this project proposes to consolidate those parcels into a single-lot subdivision. As you can see, the lot totals 33,000 square feet. So here's a view of the existing site. As you can see, it's currently developed with an existing building. This is a warehouse building that actually went through a fire in 2016, which left it unusable. And this site has been sitting vacant for the last six years. So this project proposes to redevelop this site with a new industrial condo project. The existing improvements would be demolished to make way for the project. So as with neighborhood compatibility review for residential projects, staff also works very closely with our project proponents for neighborhood review and compatibility for non-residential projects. This slide is to give you an idea of what the existing neighborhood looks like. The top-left photo shows a picture looking from Magnolia North. You can see the new 10-unit industrial condo that was built and signed off last year. Next to that, to the right-top photo, that's a picture of the existing development on the south side of the property. And then the bottom-left picture is across the street from Magnolia, looking west. And then the right-bottom photo is a picture of the existing development to the east of this project site. So this project would abut that bottom-right development. Here is a picture of the proposed site plan. The building totals approximately 17,000 square feet in size, and it will be oriented towards West Chestnut Avenue. The building footprint will be located along the south property line, which abuts a 16-foot wide alley, and this will provide easy access for business loading and unloading activities as well as to facilitate trash service. New parking lot access will be provided via two driveway entrances along West Chestnut. A total of 33 parking spaces will be provided. New landscaping will be provided in all the setbacks. There will also be a provision of bicycle parking that's located along the south side of Magnolia, and that's highlighted by that dark gray square. There are four floor plans that are proposed with this development, each varying size depending on, some have greater warehouse area to office area. The applicant proposes to build these, to build out the floor plan so that upon sale they can be easily occupied, which is a plus. And there are four different plans that range in size between 1,600 and 1,900 square feet. This project was also reviewed carefully against the city's zoning code, and it meets and exceeds all the development standards in relation to floor ratio, setbacks, and parking requirements. So this is a bird's-eye view of what the project would look like from the sky looking southeast. Here you can see that each of the units will have their own individual entrances. And then this is another bird's-eye illustration of the project looking northwest. This shows the back of the building adjacent to the alley and where the garage, the roll-up doors would be accessible for each of the businesses. The architectural style is very modern and streamlined, and this is highlighted by the cool colors and lines that are presented in the architectural drawings. The building will have a very cool glacier-white stucco, which will have further articulation embedded with the use of aluminum reveals that it will be recessed. Each of the tenant entrances will be highlighted by an architectural vertical fin, and those are that orange clay-colored hue, points that will highlight the entrance to each of those tenant spaces, along with the gray vertical band, which will be used for future business signage. The units incorporate nice metal awning canopies against each, over each of the entries. All windows and entries will be recessed. And then these are the elevations of the building that are proposed. So the top one is showing what the building would look like adjacent to the next-door neighbor property. The bottom illustration is what would be visible from South Magnolia. As you can see, the building varies in height. The lower the height, the lowest height is 23 feet. It goes up to 27. The center of the building is where the tallest portion of the building is. And there are also windows that have been incorporated into this elevation to add further interest. And this is showing the back of the building, the roll-up doors. So with this, staff and the Planning Commission are recommending our standard planning, public works, and fire conditions. Given that there's typically no one-size-business-that-fits-all, staff has also incorporated some business-friendly conditions of approval that are really geared towards facilitating business within these new units, primarily because the majority of these businesses will be parked based on the industrial use and office space provided and 33 parking spaces provided. Staff has incorporated a condition, though, that would allow future addition of mezzanine area, and this would be area for strictly storage, which could be reviewed and approved by the DRC, as well as the possibility for incidental retail sales of products that are manufactured on-site. And this could potentially be a little brewery or perhaps a business that manufactures candles and wants to have a little, a little small area for retail sales. The director completed an advisory review of this project on the behalf of the DRC on, in December 16th, 2020. The Planning Commission reviewed it at their last Planning Commission meeting, January 13th, and unanimously recommended approval to the City Council. So with that, staff is recommending that the City Council approve the project by adopting City Council Resolution 2021-11. I am available should you have any questions, and I do believe the project applicants are also present tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Sherry. Great report as always. Any questions of staff? Hearing none. This is a public hearing. I will open the public hearing, and I think, Sherry, you said that the applicant is with us this evening?
That is correct.
Oh, sorry.
Would the applicant like to make a statement?
Yeah, good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Eric Sang. I'm the architect for this 10-unit warehouse project located at 900 Magnolia. I would like to thank staff for the comprehensive staff report, and I do not have any additional information regarding this project at this point. The civil engineer, E.G.L., and the property owner, Jason Shu, is also present at this meeting. We will be here to answer any questions regarding this project. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Alice, do we have any public comments on this item?
No, Mayor, we did not receive any written comments.
We have none, so I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2021-11.
I'll second.
It's moved and seconded to approve this item. Is there any other discussion? Is there any objection? Alice, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Blackburn.
Yes.
Chevlin.
Yes.
Spicer.
Yes.
Mayor Protam Crutchington.
Yes.
And Mayor Adams.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Sherry.
Thank you.
And Mayor, again, with the adoption of that Resolution 2021-11, the city's consideration and action on this project, the conditional use permit and the map was the final action of the city, and any judicial review must be sought within the time provided by Code of Civil Procedure Section 1094.6.
Thank you, sir. We'll now move on to reports of city manager and staff, and Mr. Feek, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One item I'd like to do real briefly before I address the directives is just respond to the letter from Mrs. Allison Henry, just briefly, from Monrovia Housing and Tenants Advocates regarding what she referred to as an eviction lockout. I will reach out to her tomorrow in a more formal manner, but also certainly would like to speak with the tenants, Monrovia Housing and Tenants Associates, or advocates, excuse me, and talk maybe about ways that they can help share information with us, how we could partner together. We're constantly doing outreach in the community through our police department, so if there are ways we can help be a better service provider to all Monrovians, we certainly want to. On December 24th, we responded to a call from a resident. It was not referred as an eviction lockout. In fact, the Monrovia Police Department does not do eviction lockouts. Those are solely the work of the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department. But we refer to this call as a keeping-the-peace call. The resident, the one who claimed to be evicted, the resident had called us and asked, she wanted access to her belongings. The home was owned by her mother and was currently in escrow, scheduled to close escrow within five days. No one was living at the house. Everything had already been moved out. So whether there was an eviction or not, you know, there's a lot of details that we just didn't get involved in, but no one was living at the house. And at the time, when the officer was there, the owner of the home who was selling it, the elderly mother, had offered to put the daughter up in a hotel for the evening, but also to provide, provided access to belongings which had been stored to the side of the home, also offered to pay for storage for those belongings as well. So the officer, you know, was not perceived in any way that it was an eviction. In fact, no one was living there at the time, and within five days, it was going to be the home of a new owner. But we want to make sure that we're providing, you know, information to residents in need. You know, our officers really have to be subject matter experts in their field, but we're also asking them to do a lot more and have access to a lot more information. And so we want to make sure we're giving them the most meaningful, correct information where they can help people in need at any given time. So we'll reach out, myself as well as Alan will do that. We'll work with the advocates and see if there's, you know, better ways we can serve the public. But I do think there's much more to the story, and I just want to be clear, our police department, we do not do eviction lockouts.
And Dylan, I appreciate you bringing that forward. I know when this first surfaced, social media was full of claims that the Monrovia Police Department was evicting people. And it's unfortunate that the misinformation tends to go like wildfire, but I appreciate some of the facts being thrown in as well. Thank you.
One item I'd like to share with you is each year, our staff puts together a nice calendar. This year, it's a little bit more difficult to pass these out to the public, just because all the city facilities are closed. So Sean and the Public Works Team, who puts together our annual calendar, is working on a plan to get these shared. We'll look at how we can distribute through, via, you know, getting on a form on the website and making a request. But what's kind of neat about this year's calendar is it's a really cool coloring book. And so if you scroll through any one of the months, we've got a nice picture or image of something that's going to be, you know, the public library. It's going to be the fire station. We're even passing these out at the fire station, and our firefighters are taking them home to their families. So it's kind of exciting and fun. And again, normally, we'd have these stationed at all the different entrances to the city buildings and invite people to take them. We're trying to think through some, you know, ways of how we can deliver them to people's homes this year. So just a little bit of a more fun and unique thing to do.
Hey, Dylan, is there any pictures of the council in there? You know, I can imagine what I would look like.
You know, Larry, no, not this year, but next year, your January.
Oh, Lord.
Larry, they don't want us on there. You know that.
We'll do it by birthday month, so we'll put that picture of Larry and Becky up for February. How's that?
Man, all right.
I'm gonna go ahead and advise against that right now, a year in advance.
All right, sounds good. Yesterday, I received a letter. As many people are aware, a lot of questions, concerns about how the COVID-19 vaccination is going to be rolled out. And as we've said before, even here in the council meeting, there's just a lot of changes happening at the federal level, at the state level, even at the county level, a lot of confusion. You know, folks are looking to us to provide the most accurate information, and sometimes we just want to throw our hands up and say, "We have no idea." One bit of information I can share that's kind of unfortunate, if council remembers, several months ago, we approved an agreement with LA County Public Health to create what was called an M-Pod, a mobile point of dispensing site at the community center. Because of all of these changes going on here at the state and even locally, the county provided notice that for right now, they're not going to be pursuing any new M-Pod agreements. They have six current M-Pod agreements, including one with Monrovia, but they're not doing any new agreements, and they're also not really planning any kind of mass vaccination rollout at the moment until there's more clarity from the governor in how many vaccines we're going to be receiving, what the priorities are. So, you know, we've done everything we could to prepare, and now we're just waiting. And I think that's really, you know, the demand for the vaccine is just so great, and there's just so little supply right now. Everyone's just waiting for them to trickle in. So we'll continue to share information as we can, when we can, but we're very optimistic that, you know, the systems have been established. They're now distributing. There's, you know, there's a lot of infrastructure that's been put in place, a lot of monitoring, a lot of, you know, software is being used to track and count and so on and so forth. And so now we're just, now we just need the vaccines to come. So we're optimistic that it's going to start picking up more steam as we get further along. The two other items I'd like to share briefly, last weekend on February 1st, Monrovia Police Department issued a press release. You all would have received it, but just for the public who doesn't subscribe to those, I just wanted to share an update related to the homicide at Al's Liquor Store on December 23rd. But as of January 28th, two of the suspects have been identified and taken into custody. Suspects were identified as Dion Armstrong Williams from Duarte and Trayvon Dixon from Azusa. Case was presented to the LA County District Attorney's Office by the Los Angeles County Sheriff's homicide detectives, and murder charges were filed. So we're very, very happy to hear that suspects are in custody. Great work from LA County Sheriff's Homicide Bureau, but also from our own detective bureau, who've just done a rock-star job in assisting the county. Unfortunately, on that, on January 29th, we had another homicide here in Monrovia. Everyone has been made aware. I just want to read the press release real quickly, because this is the only information that we've shared publicly at this time. But on Friday, January 29th, at 5:03, Monrovia Fire and Police Departments were called to the 100 block of East Los Angeles Street after several residents reported hearing multiple gunshots. One of the residents reported an adult male subject had been shot. Suspects were reported to have fled the area in a vehicle. When our police and fire had arrived, there was one suspect pronounced deceased by Monrovia paramedics. The investigation will be ongoing, but like the previous homicide investigation, it's also being handled by the LA County Sheriff's Homicide Bureau with assistance from our own detective bureau. So it's very unfortunate that we've seen these incidents of gun violence these last couple months. We've actually been tracking and monitoring how many we've had. But Alan and I have been talking about holding another community meeting to talk specifically about what we're seeing, what's going on, how the police department responds to these. Unfortunately, we can't always prevent the crime. However, we can control how we respond and how quickly respond. So just like when these calls came in, we had officers, paramedics on scene immediately, and then we worked tirelessly until we're able to close a case. They do a wonderful job, and we'll continue, we'll continue to make that commitment every day. But it's just unsettling to have this many in so short a window. So we're very hopeful that the detective and homicide bureaus will be able to arrest a few more, a few more people here very soon. The last couple items was just addressing the council directives. One item I want to make mention of, we've been having a lot of meetings with Lobasto, and we're looking forward to bringing some items to council in the near future about possible EV possible EV charging stations on city facilities. We're, we're looking forward to it. It just takes a lot of work to look at all of our parking lots, available electricity, and start choosing which preferred EV charging stations we'll want to use. And then we're scheduled for the March 2nd council meeting to have a review of the historic preservation ordinance, how we award milzak contracts, talk a little bit about what's next in our, in our, you know, in our plans moving forward related to historic preservation. And also, Councilmember Crutchington is our new council liaison to the Old Town Advisory Board. And so one of the things we're doing just to accommodate schedules is we're moving the meeting from the first meeting of the month to the third meeting of the month. And at our next Old Town Advisory Board meeting, they'll be discussing input related to Motab membership from, board membership from 5 to 7. We're also soliciting feedback from all the merchants within the Old Town Business Improvement District. So that is my report for this evening. I apologize for the length, Mayor.
Any questions of Dylan?
No questions. Did you want to, since another thing has, has changed, the outdoor dining and how we're handling that, the street closures there on Myrtle?
Yes, yes, thank you. We're very, very surprised to see the governor issue a new executive order last week, but also very happy that the county followed suit and opened up outdoor dining effective last Friday. Even despite the rain, there were people dining outdoors, which is good. At this point, as we move forward, a lot of our merchants are reaching out and starting to set out their tables. It's the same essential, same protocol as before, except there are some minor changes in the county health order. Those changes include the county's now setting tables apart eight feet, asking for eight feet of separation versus the previous six feet. They're asking everyone to, all the, the businesses to remove TVs outside. Everyone's going to be gathering for the Super Bowl. There's a concern that the Super Bowl will be another, you know, super-spreader event, as they, as they call it. And so, and then also dining only with members of your household, so not gathering in groups outside of household. There still is a safer-at-home order, although you can dine outside, they're still asking not to congregate in people outside of your household. Those are the main changes for this recent order. We've already got a couple new businesses that are reaching out to us wanting to do the outdoor business permits, and so we're assisting them. At this point, we're also getting to a, a, a point where there's, there's not really a lot of extra room to put businesses on, on the sides, and so our, our staff is even looking at maybe allowing some encroachment onto Myrtle Avenue, only in limited circumstances, only where it makes sense. But, but there's some businesses that just don't have outdoor space, and there's no place in the, in the sidewalk, and we want to do everything we can to help them out, as well as provide, you know, if the city has equipment, barricades, you know, anything out of Public Works Corp yard, we're bringing it on site. We're waiving any of the permit fees, we're doing all we can to support our struggling businesses at this time. And, and with days like today where it reached 80 degrees, you know, it's, we want people to be safe, but we want them to support our, our Old Town businesses and our businesses in the community, so we'll do what we can. That's a little bit of the update on the, again, allowing outdoor dining.
Alright, any other questions of Dylan? Then we will move on to our reports to city council members, and we'll start with Mr. Blackburn.
I have no report, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Crutchington.
Thank you. Other than the addition of Motab in my life, and a continuation of stormwater meetings, that part of my life is continuing on in force. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Spicer.
I have no report, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Shovelin.
Thank you. And I did want to give a shout out to our chief, Brad Dover, Fire Chief Brad Dover. He did an excellent job at the MAP Area Partnership, presenting the, all the things about COVID vaccines, and then he also made a presentation just yesterday for the Monrovia Coordinating Council, and he did a, a great job at fielding questions, and it's just so frustrating that things change so quickly, because right after he left the meeting, he texted me and he says, oh, I just, now, now that I give that presentation, there's yet something else that had changed. So I think we just need to get used to the idea that we have to check often all the, the regulations, but I did want to thank our chief for doing that. It was, it was a, a great job. And also for the state of the city, just wanted to give a high five to the staff and K-Gem. I've gotten a lot of, I'm sure the rest of the council too, has gotten a lot of comments and, and actually compliments as to the, to the state of the city. I think they liked the condensed format. It was nice, it's fun being in the theater and everything, but the, the shorter format they liked. So at any rate, I did want to talk about, yesterday Gloria and I actually attended the San Gabel Valley COG Executive Board Meeting, and there was one item on there, because of timing, that we did go ahead and the executive board took a vote to oppose a certain piece of legislation. It's SB 9. And so because of, of timing of their first hearing on this, this matter, and it would be before the governing board, so we authorized the COG, the COG president to sign a letter indicating that we were in opposition, and that will go to our local legislators as well as the makers of the, the authors of the bill. It, I just wanted to say that SB 9 is really a redo of SB 1120 last year, and that had been supported among others, but our Senator, Senator Rubio, oh, excuse me, Senator Rubio is not ours, we have Portantino, but she also represents many of the COG cities. But at any rate, the only reason that SB 1120 didn't pass, they just ran out of time. If they'd had a little extra time, it, it would have been passed, and I'm sure it would have been signed into law. And this had to do with the lot split of single-family lots, and allowing the building of duplexes, and even the option possibly of adding an ADU to that. So it really creates a lot of increased density on a single-family lot. Those lots would have to be a minimum of 1,200 square feet with four-foot setbacks. That's craziness, but at any rate, the problem is that something will get passed. We did meet earlier with Senator Rubio, she was very disappointed that we opposed it in the past, and wanted to work with us, so we had, have come up with, it's still opposed unless amended, and there are a lot of amendments that we would require before we would agree to that, but I wanted to pass that on to the council, that Gloria and I did, did vote in favor of sending this letter in opposition. And some of the items then that we requested, support planned growth, local jurisdiction should be authorized to adopt a fan, a finding that existing and planned infrastructure and public services in the R1 neighborhood can sustain the new housing and the new residents likely to result under SB 9. I mean, that's critical. So much of this talk about building of density doesn't take in consideration the infrastructure that's required also, and the not-so-distant future, all the talk about the electric vehicles and, and lack of parking and things like that. Where, where are these cars going to be charged? Things like that. Where's this infrastructure going to come, or even a parking space for them to park in? But at any rate, provide housing credit, local governments have been required since 1969 to plan for and rezone their communities to accommodate allocations by the state of California of new affordable market-rate housing through the Regional Housing Needs Assessment, RENA process. Local jurisdictions, local jurisdictions should be granted RENA credit for R1 neighborhoods that are subject to the provisions of SB 9. And consistent with RENA credit granted for ADUs, support affordable housing, SB 9 provides no state financial support to help foster the construction of affordable, as opposed to market-rate duplex housing, and the bill should be amended to do so, especially given the high land costs in major metropolitan areas. Stop land speculation if the intent of SB 9 is to foster housing protection, lots bits of R1 parcels under the provisions of SB 9, which do not result in the construction of new multifamily housing should be prohibited. Maintain police fire protection, avoid parking shortages. SB 9 waives all parking requirements if the development is located within one-half mile of transit or one block of car-share vehicle and other, and otherwise requires no more than two off-street spaces. SB 9 should defer to local parking requirements, which typically require four covered parking spaces per two-family duplex, to avoid severe shortages of curbside parking, uphold dwelling habitability. SB 9 proposes rear yard setbacks of four feet to replace a typical setback for duplexes of 15 feet, so we would want that changed. Prohibit duplex add-ons. In other words, if you have the duplexes, you can't then add an ADU on, on top of that. And prevent wildfire catastrophes. SB 9 does not exempt high-fire severity zones from denser development. So at any rate, those are some of them. I will say that the one thing that was added to the last year's, the 1120, was protection for historic designated areas, districts. So that is again in this legislation as well, but that letter will go, and we all, obviously as a city, if we wanted to just outright oppose it, we could, if we want, want to at some point, the, the issue there is when we always say no with no option of any type of compromiser working with them, then we get shut out of the conversation as well. So it's, it's not, it's difficult. It's, it's very difficult, because they are going to pass something one way or another, whether we like it or not, but we are making our voices be known that we want to have more local control on that. In the governing board package, there will be, it will go to the governing board, and I'll bring it back next meeting, and that has to do with a measure, in fact, there are two measures that Senator Feinstein is bringing forward, and that has to do with supporting a federal affordable housing grant programming, and also fighting homelessness through Services and Housing Act. One is money that would provide funding to local governments for capital and services supporting housing, and the other one would be to provide funding that would help local, state and local governments or nonprofit organizations acquire and rehabilitate existing buildings for the use as affordable, specifically for affordable housing. So we do have those two things, and I will be meeting tomorrow with the homeless committee, and we will be talking about or learning more on Project Home Key, and also about this one piece of legislation that, that could provide funding. And I think that's pretty much it, but I'll bring those two pieces of legislation back to the, the next meeting, but our homeless committee meeting is, is very active, and we're hearing a lot of, sharing a lot of things and how, and we might even have, I haven't told you, Dylan, we were thinking about a, a, a program about Monrovia's, our rental support program, so, our E-Chip program, so we might be doing that in the near future as well. And I'm also meeting for the Housing Trust later in the morning tomorrow, and good things happening there. So that's all I have. Happy Valentine's Day, everyone, and have a great Black History Month, and participate in some of the activities.
And Becky, if, if I heard you correctly, historic districts would not be impacted by this?
Correct. They, they, they could not be, they could not be accessed for the, the lot splits.
Then could we just designate the entire city of Monrovia as?
Yeah, as a historic district.
I'm serious.
Yeah, well, I, I, I suppose.
Mr. Steele, can you look into that and give us a report back at our next meeting to see if we could just create Monrovia as a historic district and avoid the Sacramento plague?
I will certainly take a look at that, Mr. Steele.
Alright, thank you. Thank you, Becky.
You're, you're welcome.
Okay, and I would also like to thank the folks that put on the, or put together, I should say, the State of the City address. You know, there's that old saying, when life hands you lemons, you go make lemonade, and I'll tell you what, they put together some pretty darn good lemonades, so thanks to everybody, including K-Gem, who helped make that happen. And I know, I, I hope we can get back to our regular format next year, but in the meantime, they did a pretty darn good job. I also want to remind everyone to wear your masks when you're out in the world, because we're not out of this yet, and the numbers may be falling, and restaurants may be reopening for outdoor dining, but we're not out of the woods, and so please, 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 wear your masks, and maybe we can get through this together. So thank you. Okay, next up, we have a report on the Ad-Hoc Committee on Equity and Inclusion, a January progress report, and Mr. Feek.
I will just take a quick moment to introduce Ruhiya Yul, who is the Chair of the Ad-Hoc Committee on Equity and Inclusion, and I believe she, there she is. Ruhiya, welcome.
Well, welcome. Thank you for being here with us.
Hey, y'all. Again, I'm Ruhiya Yul, and I'm just here to give a progress report on behalf of the Ad-Hoc Committee on Equity and Inclusion. The, the report reads to Monrovia City Council from the members of the Ad-Hoc Committee on Equity and Inclusion. I am reading the report because I was elected the chairperson. It's dated January 14th, 2021. The Ad-Hoc Committee on Equity and Inclusion, Resolution Number 2020-62 of 7 July 2020, continues to review the city of Monrovia's policies, practices, practices and procedures to determine whether barriers exist that impede diversity, equity and inclusion in city government. This is the tentative schedule of Monrovia Ad-Hoc Committee on Equity and Inclusion since the last progress report dated 17 November 2020. On the 19th of November, we met to continue reviewing the Monrovia Police Department. On December 3rd, we looked at the Administrative Services Department. On the 17th of December, we reviewed recommendations that we had made thus far for human resources and the police. 31st, our meeting was canceled. The 14th of January, we looked at the Community Development Department. On the 28th of January, which was our last meeting, the last one we held, was looking specifically at the Fire Department. Our upcoming meetings, I mean, we weren't meet alternate, alternate Fridays, excuse me, alternate Thursdays, is on the 11th, is the Community Services Department. On the 25th, Public Works Department. On the 11th, we're going to review our recommendations for the Administrative Services and, as well as the rest of the departments that at that point we have, will have reviewed. On the 25th of March, as well as the 8th of April, we intend to construct our final recommendations and report for the city council, and it is our intention to submit a final report with recommendations thoughtfully considered and well organized to this council by April 20th, 2021.
Well, Ruhiya, we really appreciate all your efforts, and you and the entire committee, and we look forward to future reports, but we do thank you for everything, and I'll tell you what, you've been busy, haven't you? Good. Any questions for Ruhiya? Okay, then we- Okay, then we will move on. Thank you so much again. Happy New Year to you. Stay healthy.
I'm not healthy, so keep wearing your masks, so.
Okay.
Why, you got COVID?
I do have COVID.
Okay, well, here, well, anything you need, call me and I'll drop it at the door.
I've been very, 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 very careful, so everyone do what the mayor said. Double mask.
Yes, thank you.
Y'all so much.
Something, give me a call.
I will, Larry. You're my first call.
All right.
Well, get well.
Bye, everyone. I'm trying to.
Need you back. Okay, we'll now move on to administrative reports. AR one is a fiscal year twenty. Twenty-one mid-year operating budget update and Buffy Ballas, our Administrative Services Director. Will give us that report. Welcome, Buffy. Happy New Year.
Thank you, Mayor Adams and members of the city council. Good evening. Uh thank you for your time today or this evening. Um so this evening, I'll be providing a mid-year budget update. Just one second. Um so if council will recall, in August of uh last year, we approved the twenty twenty-one budget. Um we knew that we would have to closely monitor it throughout the fiscal year and agreed that we would do quarterly updates. And we did our first update in October. Uh this evening is our second update at the mid-year point. And then we will do another update in uh after March of next year. Of this year, actually, sorry. Um so the purpose of tonight's update is to provide council with the recap of the general fund for nineteen twenty based on audited numbers. And provide council with a proposed twenty twenty-one uh budget adjustments for your consideration based on our latest estimates. And then to touch base on a few items, including the emergency events of twenty twenty, the PERS UAL. And then Measure K revenue estimates. When we last met with council in October, we used pre-audit numbers because we hadn't completed our our audit yet. Uh now that the audit is complete, we have final numbers for nineteen twenty. We will be bringing the CAFER back at the next meeting uh to present to the city council. But we do have good news for nineteen twenty. The general fund ended the year with the surplus of six hundred and ninety-one thousand. At this mid-year uh point for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, we are better able to assess our estimates through the end of the year. So for twenty twenty-one, we're proposing some big-ticket general fund revenue adjustments. Um we're also proposing some decreases to our user fees uh and uh program revenues because of extended closures. And other COVID impacts. And also we'll be proposing corresponding decreases in expenditures. Overall, this is a conservative budget of pro- proposal. The overall outlook is positive. Um we'll continue to be diligent and monitor the budget through the remainder of the year. And as I had mentioned, we'll be doing another quarterly update in a few months. Um so first, we're gonna take a quick look at the general fund for nineteen twenty. So I ha- as I had mentioned, we completed our audit. And based on audited numbers, sales tax and hotel tax experienced the largest negative budget variances for the year. However, there were quite a few other revenues that came in above or at budget for nineteen twenty. Overall, savings and expenditures helped to offset any shortfalls we had in revenues. And as council will recall, our original estimates were projecting shortfalls of over two point six million dollars. Some revenues came in higher than expected, but also council's ability to make quick and decisive adjustments helped to keep the city in a good financial position. And then for nineteen twenty, as I had mentioned, we closed with the surplus of six hundred and ninety-one thousand. So this uh slide here shows our actual revenues and expenditures for nineteen twenty. Um on a positive note, we end, we're ending the year with more of a surplus than uh was in in. Uh expected with our original budget proposal, which was a surplus of twenty-nine thousand. And most savings occurred because we kept uh vacant positions frozen for the year and we also adjusted our M and O budgets. And again, staff and city council did a great job of making quick adjustments uh when the pandemic hit. Um so this slide here has our big uh or has our general fund revenues. Um and we'll talk about our big ticket revenues on the next few slides for nineteen twenty. Um the biggest variances, as I had mentioned, are in sales tax and hotel tax. Um this sl- slide shows the revised budget that was approved last March as we were entering a recession. After a long period of economic expansion. And just for comparison, our original budget uh that we approved in spring of twenty nineteen was forty-two point two million. So you can see the impact that COVID had on our budget and on our final numbers and it just speaks to the work that staff did. Um to adjust uh to the revenue shortfalls uh when the pandemic hit. Uh so we're going to going to take a look at some of our key revenues in the general fund. Property tax really has been our most stable revenue source during this pandemic. For nineteen twenty, uh property tax closed the year with uh. Uh a hundred and forty-nine, that little over a hundred and forty-nine thousand increase or uh came in higher than budget. Staff is not proposing a mid-year budget at this time um to our secured or unsecured property tax. There are minimal, if any, um impacts from COVID nineteen for this fiscal year. And as council will recall, part of that is because our property tax values were set as of January first of twenty twenty and they were based on the prior calendar year. So our values won't be adjusted during this fiscal year. Um we are proposing one adjustment of a little over a hundred and forty-nine thousand to property tax in Lua V L F. Which is a component of our total property tax number. So overall, the twenty twenty-one budget is a little over thirteen million dollars for property tax. And then next, we have a couple of updates on our sales tax. Um for nineteen twenty, sales tax closed the year. Little over four hundred and sixty-seven thousand less than the budget. However, on a positive note, sales tax performed much better than we had expected. And we recently reviewed third quarter sales tax results with our consultant and I'm happy to report the con- uh sales tax continues to show growth. Um the pool allocations increased by fifty-three uh and a half percent over the prior year period. As more retail shut uh sales have shifted to online sales. Um and this is the second highest category in all of our sales tax categories. The first highest is autos and transportation. Um and this one was only down six point three percent over the prior year period, so that performed better than expected. Um and for twenty twenty-one, um our sales tax continues to do slightly better than expected. Uh we are proposing a positive adjustment of a hundred and eighty-nine thousand in our Bradley Burns one percent sales tax. And then a small adjustment of two thousand four hundred and twelve dollars in our half-cent public safety sales tax. And overall, the total budget uh for sales tax is ten point eight mil- a little over ten point eight million. And then our hotel tax or TOT has seen the biggest impacts in both fiscal years. Uh for nineteen twenty, we closed the year a little over four hundred and eighty-nine thousand less than the budget. Than the revised budget. Um we performed a recent survey of our hotels in January. And on average, the current occupancy levels are between twenty-five to fifty percent compared to normal levels of seventy to a hundred percent. So it's pretty significant. As I had mentioned in our last quarterly update, some hotels have lowered their rates to be competitive. Um and if council will recall, we did make a large negative adjustment at the October uh update of about six hundred and eleven thousand dollars. Um and so at this time, we're only proposing a small negative adjustment of ten thousand nine hundred and sixty-one dollars for this quarter. Um and this is really is based on looking at each hotel and their specific circumstances and creating an estimate based on that information. So the total budget uh for fiscal year twenty twenty-one is one, a little over one point two million. Okay, so let's take a look at the other revenues in the general fund. Um this category includes um revenues such as charges for services. User fees, license and licenses and permits, transfers in and a few other revenues. For nineteen twenty, we closed the year a little over two hundred and eighty-five thousand less than budget. And then due to closures of facilities and a reduction in activity for this current fiscal year, uh some revenues will be adjusted downward. Especially impacting recreation. So recreation revenues were one of the most impacted revenues with this adjustment. And we're proposing a reduction of a little over a hundred and ninety-four thousand uh in revenues. However, we're also proposing uh reduction in expenditures totaling a little over four hundred and thirty-four thousand. And a detailed listing of all the line item budget, um all the budget line items are in your agenda report as attachment A. Okay, so now that we've looked at the revenues, we're gonna take a quick look at the general fund expenditures. Um all general general fund expenditures were reviewed. Um and a net decrease of a little over four hundred and seventy-eight thousand is being proposed as part of this of this mid-year proposal. And then as part of staff's review, uh each expenditure was reviewed for necessity. Our vacancy savings will continue through the end of the year. And most operating departments had small increases to their budgets. However, a significant reduction is being proposed. In the Library and Recreation Division. A library's decrease is a little over ninety-four thousand and the rec- the decrease to recreation's expenditures is a little over four hundred and thirty-four thousand. And a majority of the savings really is due to part-time staffing costs, the cost savings. And again, a detailed listing of the line items is attached in your agenda report. So for a quick review of the general fund ending financial position, uh based on audited numbers, we closed nineteen twenty with a surplus. Of a little over six hundred and ninety-one thousand. And then uh given the proposed adjustments for uh twenty twenty-one, at this point in time, we're expected to close this fiscal year. With a deficit of six hundred and seventy-one thousand. And combined, we expect a net surplus for the two years totaling a positive twenty thousand one hundred and forty-four dollars. And this slide here shows that calculation. Um I did want to make note, this is just the general fund. As council will recall, on the CAFER, the general fund is or several other funds are rolled into the general fund on the CAFER for presentation. This is just the general fund here. But in looking at these numbers, um in in October, when we met, we were expecting a seven hundred and ninety-five thousand. Deficit and this does include the five hundred thousand dollars that we're setting aside for the Section one fifteen trust. And then with this mid-year proposal, we are uh proposing a reduction of a little over three hundred and fifty-four thousand in revenues. And we are also proposing a reduction of a little over four hundred and seventy-eight thousand in expenditures. Which takes us to our expected deficit at the end of the fiscal year in the general fund of six hundred and seventy-one thousand. If we apply last year's surplus to that deficit, so the surplus was six hundred and ninety-one thousand. Over the two-year period, we expect a surplus of twenty thousand, a little over twenty thousand. And so that concludes my uh review of the general fund. At this time, I wanted to see if council had any questions on the general fund before we move on.
Any questions for Buffy?
Buffy, on the projections on the income, especially like in sales tax, uh are we? Is that based on business being open at some, a certain time or being closed? Through a certain time?
Yeah, so um the uh projections are very conservative and so um the the kind of the overall assumption. Is that we'll continue to be closed and slowly open up again. Um so they're very conservative, really, in all of our estimates. Um we've taken in probably an overly conservative approach, but just knowing we have another quarterly update where we can reevaluate. See what happens and then we can make additional adjustments at that time.
And and I apologize, I was listening for Measure K. Were those numbers given in any of the in this?
Yes, um I'm gonna be touching on that at the very end.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Okay.
Any other questions for Buffy? Okay, we'll move on. Thank you.
Okay, so um we'll take a quick look at our other funds. Um staff reviewed the city's other fi- funds and proposed adjustments are being presented. To city council for consideration. Um the Development Services Fund, as council is aware, this fund is used to account for building, planning. And engineering activities. And for internal accounting, this fund is a standalone fund, but it's combined with the general fund on the CAFER. Um for mid-year, um because of delays in new development, we'll be shifting nine hundred and forty-six thousand in revenue to the next year. And then for our other fu- funds, uh proposed adjustments are recommended to better align the budget with updated estimates. And again, the line item details are available in your agenda report. Um if there's any questions, I would be happy to answer them. Uh but I won't go into that level of detail at this time. Okay, so we wanted to take an opportunity to update council on the emergency events of twenty twenty. So as council is aware. Uh last year, we experienced a series of unique and unprecedented one-time emergency events. Um these included the COVID nineteen pandemic, um the civil unrest events following the death of George Floyd. We saw protests across the nation and some violence, but here in Monrovia, we did have peaceful protests. Um and also the Bobcat Fire. And all of these were declared uh emergencies by the federal and state governments. And each event resulted in unplanned costs for the city. Um we're expecting federal funding of seventy-five percent for each event and so that uh means that the city's match would be twenty-five percent. Um we did receive some good news today and it sounds like COVID nineteen will be fully funded by FEMA a hundred percent. So that was uh very optimistic, so we're hoping um that that comes through. And then uh staff's been working on the Bobcat Fire and COVID reimbursements, um so those are underway. And then this matrix here has information on each event, so I wanted to go over this just uh real quickly. Uh the first one is the COVID nineteen pandemic. Um estimated cost is approximately six hundred and sixty-two thousand. Um the funding is broken down by CARES Act funding uh for four hundred and sixty-eight. We also have FEMA. Um and I, this slide was prepared before I'd gotten the good news, so. Really, the FEMA and the city uh would all be FEMA at this point in time. Um at this time, uh we've already received four hundred and sixty-eight thousand in CARES Act funding, so the only um missing piece at this time. Would be the FEMA funding. And then for the civil unrest event, um the cost is estimated to be eighty-three thousand. Uh we're looking for FEMA funding of about sixty-two thousand. And the city's uh portion would be twenty-one. A FEMA funding has not yet been formally approved, so that's pending, but we expect that it will be. And then for the Bobcat Fire, uh based on initial estimates, we're looking at costs of seven million. And then we have a breakdown uh there. We're looking uh for FEMA funding of a little over four point eight million. CAL OES, which is the equivalent of FEMA, but the State Department, we're looking at one point two million. Uh insurance coverage would be about five hundred thousand and then we're looking at a city contribution of about four hundred thousand. These are just initial estimates, so the numbers will change. And uh for both FEMA and CAL OES, we've already submitted our initial reimbursement assessment um to them in January. And as I had mentioned, um staff's currently working uh with FEMA and CAL OES on those uh reimbursements. And then uh for our insurance claim, staff did a walkthrough with the insurance adjuster, so we're waiting next steps for that. And then uh we wanted to provide council with an update on the PERS UAL. So addressing our outstanding balance continues to be a top priority for us. And based on the most recent PERS reports, we're expecting the outstanding balance at the end of this fiscal year to be about fourteen, a little over fourteen point four million. And there are several factors that drive this outstanding balance and they're really a- all outside of the city's control, but they include. Uh here are the first one, actuarial assumption changes. Um this contributes to more than seventy-five percent of the current outstanding balance. And this really is due to the recent change in the discount rate. As council will recall, it went from seven point five percent. To seven percent over a a series of phases, um but we're now at the seven percent um discount rate. So that was a big driver in the outstanding balance. And then investment gains and losses. So this occurs when PERS is unable to meet their assumed rate of return. And then if there's any differences between actuarial assumptions and actual experience, this would contribute to the outstanding balance. And then the last item here is amort- amortization policy changes. So this occurs when PERS changes the policy on how. The outstanding balance is amortized. So these four things contribute to that outstanding balance. Currently, staff's working on a payoff plan that we hope to present to council within the next several months. And this plan will look to utilize the Section one fifteen trust. And then uh future increases in our re- redevelopment property tax revenues um that we can set aside to help pay down the liability. But we will return to council. But we will return to council with the plan within the next few months. And Measure K, so we wanted to provide you with an update on Measure K. So as council will recall, we met in November of last year to discuss the Measure K spending plan. And at the time, council gave us informal direction to prioritize funding for infrastructure or deferred maintenance, and then financial management or financial reserves. And these were two areas that were rated very or extremely important by the Measure K survey respondents. And so to that end, any future project that seeks to use Measure K funding will be reviewed and formally approved by city council at a future meeting. And then based on our recent review of the quarter ending September 30th with our consultants, just like the Bradley Burns sales tax, Measure K revenue has been more positive than originally expected. We are proposing a positive budget adjustment of 906,000 for fiscal year 2021, and that'll take our revenue for this fiscal year up to 4.9 million for the year. So the next steps for the budget, we'll continue to monitor it very closely. Our next quarterly update, as I had mentioned, is after the end of the quarter ending March 31st. And if we need to meet prior to that time, if anything changes, we'll definitely come back to council. And then we will begin developing the two-year budget, the 2123 two-year budget soon. So that concludes my report. I would be happy to answer any questions that council has at this time.
Great report, Buffy. Any questions for Buffy? If there are no questions, I will entertain a motion.
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
Great job, all around. Thank you so much. The report was really clear at this time, Buffy, with the addendum you put on that showed line items about what went up and down. It was, it was just simple to understand, and I thank you for that.
Thank you.
Buffy, thank you for the very thorough budget. So I would like to make a motion to adopt the Resolution Number 2021-09.
Oh, seconded.
Third, fourth?
It's moved, it's moved and seconded to adopt the resolution. Are there any other comments? Great job, Buffy.
Thank you.
Big job.
Thank you.
Alice, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Blackburn.
Yes.
Shavlin.
Yes.
Spicer.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Crujington.
Yes.
And Mayor Adams.
Yes, thank you. Thank you again, Buffy, we appreciate it.
And great job, staff.
It's always nice to get good news, but you present it well.
That was a team effort from one end to the other. Thank you so much.
Thank you, team Buffy.
Okay, we're going to move on now to AR2 is a compensation increase to the city manager's annual salary. And this evening, we're joined by Assistant City Attorney Chelsea Strauss. Welcome, Chelsea.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Adams and members of the council. This item is a proposed resolution to approve an increase to Mr. Feek's annual salary. As the council is aware, you recently completed his annual performance evaluation and directed our office to prepare a compensation adjustment and resolution for consideration and discussion in open session. The proposed resolution would increase Mr. Feek's salary by an amount of 5% annually from 210,000 to 220,500 a year. A 5% increase is the maximum allowable increase under his employment contract. There are no other proposed changes to Mr. Feek's compensation or benefits. In preparation for this item, our office conducted an informal survey of compensation paid to city managers in neighboring San Gabriel Valley cities. And a summary of our results is included in your staff report. The average city manager salary in our surveyed cities was 219,811, so Mr. Feek's proposed salary is slightly above average. This proposed salary increase was discussed with Mr. Feek, and he is very appreciative of the proposed salary increase. And pursuant to Government Code Section 54953, this is the required report before the council takes action on the compensation amount for a local agency official in open session. At this time, if the city council is in favor of the proposed salary increase, the appropriate action is a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2021-12. This concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions at this time.
Any questions of the Assistant City Attorney?
Good report, Chelsea.
Excellent report. Excellent report. I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Seconded.
It's moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I was just going to say, it's been a trial by fire, literally. Pandemics, fire, you name it. So it's been a real challenge, but you've, you've come through, Dylan, so thank you.
And I agree 100%. We, we, we kind of lucked out when we hired Dylan. I got him a little bit on the cheap, which was a smart move on our part, but now it's time to step up. And boy, I'll tell you what, you talk about making lemonade out of lemons. This has been an incredible year, and Dylan has provided some great leadership with his staff and some great guidance for the city. And we just heard a wonderful report that is really where the rubber meets the road. So Dylan, thank you so much, we appreciate that very much.
I second that. There are a lot of cities in a world of hurt right now. And you jumped in and just started squeezing everything you could out of the budget. And I thought to myself, oh my God, we got the right guy at the helm for this particular point in time. So nice to work. We're all feeling very proud of ourselves.
So I'll, I'll third that, and I look forward to some greater things. Thank you, Dylan.
It's certainly wonderful to see what you can do when we have normal or, God forbid, growthful times as opposed to what we've gone through.
And Gloria, when will those normal times be coming?
I don't know, but from my lips to God's ears, soon.
It'll be so nice to actually be able to meet in person.
And, and blow out the candles on the birthday cake.
You have a birthday cake, yes.
Well, you can have one, but it's just not the same.
It's not the same. It's, it's not, it's not the same.
Okay, Mr. Mary. See, our master, master municipal clerk.
Tom, Tom.
Oh, Dylan. Dylan.
I apologize, I just want to say real quick, first of all, I'm just, I'm very grateful. Thank you very much.
Well, we haven't, we haven't approved it yet, so.
All right, let me wait for you to approve it. No, no, real, real quick, let me just say, I appreciate all the kind words. It actually made me sweat just feeling so awkward getting the praise. We have a wonderful team here at the city. It is not a one-person job, it's a team effort, we're all part of the same team. You know, looking around the room, you know, could not do it with all the wonderful people here in the room, and so many more who are not in the room today. It's just, it's my pleasure to be here. And Tom, I'm going to give you a little nugget to, you know, save for a rainy day. You said that you got me on the cheap, and now it's time to pay up. I had done this job for free, so I, I love, I love Monrovia. So keep that in mind when you approve my contract adjustment, all right?
I told, I should have waited until they voted. You should have waited until. Knowing now that you would have done this for free, maybe we just ought to, we ought to hold this 5% back.
Found a way to add to fund balance, didn't you?
Our budget just got better.
No, we got a good deal, and you're right, we've got a great team. And the team starts with a great city council, and I need to thank all of my colleagues for their effort in this. But we've had a pretty darn good six years together, and it's going to keep getting better. And it only gets better with a good team at the top and great staff, and we're very blessed to have both, as well as good representation on the legal side.
Thanks to me.
Yeah, yeah, yep, yep.
No, it's Chelsea.
And Chelsea.
Craig, Craig's just the figurehead. Okay, then I will, see, we have a motion to approve this and a second, and I will call on our master municipal clerk, Alice Atkins, to call the roll.
Councilmembers Blackburn.
Yes.
Shavlin.
Yes.
Spicer.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Crujington.
Yes.
And Mayor Adams.
Very happily, yes, thank you. Thank you, Dylan. Well, unfortunately, we're going to conclude this meeting tonight, adjourning in memory of three folks that we've lost. And Tara Ryan is the sister of Historic Preservation Commissioner Dan Ryan. James R. Matthews is the father-in-law of Public Works Office Coordinator Susan Matthews. And Eduardo Casas Esparza, the father of water production operator Eduardo Esparza. If you could keep their family in your thoughts and prayers, I'm sure they'll be very appreciative of that. And we will see you all in two weeks. Thank you for joining us this evening. Thank you.
Happy trails.
Yeah, happy Valentines.